All right, it is seven o'clock and we welcome you all to the Planning Commission meeting tonight on August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I have asked Commissioner Nelson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will just mention at this time that on the agenda, item number one has been canceled and item number five is being continued to the August twenty-eighth meeting. So if you are here for those two items, you're free, you can do whatever you want now. All right. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Second.
With those adjustments.
Oh yeah, with the number one canceled and item number five, right?
Yeah.
To be continued.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Patton and a second by Commissioner Trickler. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's staff reports?
I motion to approve tonight's staff reports.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shirley and a second by Commissioner Phillips. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you have any declarations of conflicts and abstentions from commission members? Seeing none, we will skip item number one and we'll go right to number two, which is a public hearing to consider the request of Hunter Smith for a zone change on approximately point five-six acres of land from the A-one agriculture zone to the R-R rural residential zone located at approximately thirty-one ninety-five north, twelve forty west. Jacob?
Awesome. Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Jacob Hawkins from the Planning Department. And Madam Chairman, just as a reminder, items two through four on the agenda are requests for a rezone. What that means is that the applicants for each of these items will likely have some form of development in mind. However, what we are hearing tonight is not for the development itself. It is only a request to change the zoning requirements for their property so they might be able to do the development that they want to do in the future. The developments themselves would require their own separate approvals through either subdivision plats, land use permits, or building permits. It does not, the applications tonight do not outright guarantee that their developments are automatically approved. Instead, this is just an opportunity for us to review the applicant's proposal to change the zoning for their property, to understand why they are asking for this request, and understand what the differences are between the original and proposed zones, to determine if such a zone change would be compatible with the vision from the general plan and surrounding areas, and to make sure that if the development happens on these properties, that they will meet the appropriate zoning requirements. So with that in mind, the second item that we have for tonight is a request from Hunter Smith for a rezone for a portion of this property right here located along thirty-three-hundred north. So this overall property encompassed here with the A-one zone was annexed into the city in two thousand and eighteen and has not been included in any subdivision plat before. Now, this property was used for agricultural purposes and upon its annexation was zoned into the agricultural zone. Now, the property owners have since considered additional development, and so the applicant Cadence Homes have been working with staff on a new subdivision plat for this area, which will soon be on its own Planning Commission agenda. But with their subdivision plat in mind, the applicant is requesting to rezone approximately point five-six acres of land from the agricultural zone to the rural residential zone, which is where all of these other surrounding properties are zoned. And this rezone would be for the location of a single lot to be developed. So actually, oh no, let's do this one instead. This one's more interactive. So here's where the proposed rezone will be. And there is a slight difference between the agricultural zone and the rural residential zone, more so than other just single-family residential zones that we've had in the past. Now, the agricultural zone is intended to primarily be for agricultural use. So larger lots used for agriculture and then they'll have a house on the property, whereas for the rural residential zone, it's intended more for like the house and then they can have a couple like animal rights in limited quantities. And so, a lot of, a lot of the differences though, besides that, a lot of the uses are the same between the rural residential zone and the agricultural zone. So if I actually go up to the agricultural zone, we'll see here in the permitted uses, you know, just similar to a lot of the residential zones, single-family dwellings are permitted, accessory apartments are permitted, a lot of different utilities and such. But then whenever we get down to the agricultural zone, these agricultural uses are just broad and sweeping, whereas in the resi, in the rural residential zone, they're more specific, like they can have an orchard or they can have animal rights, like two horses per acre or two cows per acre or something like that. So it is a lot more limited like that. Besides that, the other main difference between these zones is that the agricultural zone requires one acre per lot and has to have at least two hundred feet of width, whereas the rural residential zone only requires a half acre and a hundred ten feet in width. So they are a lot smaller. They are permitted to be a lot smaller. But besides that, they're pretty similar in nature and as we noticed here in the zoning map, a lot of the surrounding properties are zoned rural residential. On top of that, the general plan itself does permit, or designates this area as being in the rural residential zone, like right about here is where that property is. And this zone, this designation is characterized by either older, single-family homes that maintain an agricultural use on their property, or newer estate lots that are arranged as part of subdivisions. And properties in this area are intended to have a minimum size of a half acre, which is intended to maintain the open feel of the area. And so because the proposed request meets the vision from the general plan and would meet the requirements of the rural residential zone, staff recommends approval of the proposed rezone, and I can take any questions.
Thank you, Jacob. Does anyone have any questions for Jacob?
Thank you.
All right.
I have a question, sorry.
You're, you were too late.
Okay.
Jacob.
Is this, is this road going to be widened then? Because it looks like a road and a half, I mean, a lane and a half. Is it going to be widened or is it a whole road?
So whenever we get to the subdivision plat itself, we'll make sure that the minimum road widths are the correct width.
I can confirm that road is built out to its full width. There is no sidewalk there today, and so obviously like he's saying, they would be, they'd be, just like anyone, if you build something, you'd be required to build all frontage improvements on the frontage of the lot. So they'll be required at, at a later time to do that.
Yeah, but we're just doing zone, I'm sorry.
Yeah, correct.
And this lot is already subdivided separate from...
It is not subdivided yet. They're doing the rezone in anticipation of doing the subdivision.
So is it conditioned upon that?
Um, so it's not necessarily even a condition per se, because the rezone will have to, of course, go through before we can really approve the subdivision plat. We can't approve a subdivision plat if it doesn't meet the minimum zoning requirements.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
All right, is the applicant here? If you'd like, you can come up to the podium and tell us about it, or you don't have to, but you can. Just make sure to state your name for the record.
My name's Hunter Smith. I don't think there's anything much extra that, what Jacob said. We're not developing this as Cadence Homes, this is for the family. They've asked us to help them, just rezone it so that they can build their own home. And so that's what we're doing. As of the moment, they have no intentions of developing the rest of that, and it will remain agriculture until they choose to do something further with it.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Hunter?
No.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone who would like to come up to the podium, just make sure to state your name for the record. Seeing none, I will close the, close it to the public and bring it up here to the commissioners for a discussion or a motion.
I move the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the request of Hunter Smith for the rezone of approximately zero point five-six acres of the land located at thirty-one ninety-five north, twelve forty west, from the agricultural zone to the rural residential zone, and adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report, and there was no modifications.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Nelson and a second by Commissioner Phillips. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three on tonight's agenda is a public hearing to consider the request of Ben Kajar?
Care.
Care? Care? For a zone change on approximately two point one-nine acres of land from the R-one dash twenty single residential zone to the R-one dash twelve zone located at approximately six forty-four north, Homestead Circle. Jacob?
Thank you, thank you. So the third item that we have for tonight is a request for a zone change for Ben Care. If you remember, back in January, we, back in January of this year, we heard a request from Ben to rezone his property, which is going to be this portion right here. So this triangle portion and then this odd-shaped flag lot right here. So he wanted to rezone his property from the R-one twelve and the R-one twenty zone to the rural residential zone so that he could have a few horses. And that was approved at Planning Commission, but then when it went to City Council, it was denied. And so since then, Ben has been working with staff on a subdivision plat to combine his lots together, and he also came across an opportunity to purchase this lot right here, six forty-four North Homestead Circle. And he is now looking to potentially develop this property as well as the back of his property and rezone them to the R-one twelve zone, which is the same zone as all of this, which is down here. Now, the proposed rezone area is about two point one-nine acres in size. Now, this property is already zoned, R-one twenty, so being in the same type of zone, the R-one twelve and the R-one twenty being the same type of zone, there are no changes to the permitted uses of the property. So he can still do a single-family home, he can still do an accessory apartment, things like that. All the permitted uses are staying the same. The only actual changes that are being made is that the, the dimensions of the lot are being amended so that way he could have slightly smaller lots. So in this particular case, being in the R-one twelve zone, he wouldn't be able to have horses, but instead of being limited to twenty thousand square feet per lot, he could have twelve thousand square feet per lot. And instead of it being a hundred feet wide, it could be ninety feet wide. So there are some differences, but they're pretty minimal. Now, the general plan, so their property, his property is right over here at the very edge, right next to this open space. And so here in this yellow portion, the single-family low density, that's the designation for the propos, or of the subject property. Now, the single-family residential low density includes the R-one fifteen, R-one twelve, and R-one ten zones, and it's intended to be just for, you know, single-family homes effectively. And so because it meets the vision of the general plan and because it's similar to what is around, in terms of like all the different zones, staff recommends approval of the proposed request, and I can take any questions.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here today? If you'd like, you can come and to the podium and make a comment, just maybe to state your name for the record.
I think that was awesome, well done. I think I would just say that we were fortunate, like one of the last things we were supposed to do to combine our lots was to have an agreement between our next-door neighbors and instead of agreeing upon like four feet, he said, why don't you just buy it from me? And so we went ahead and did that, and what that allows me to do is make what will be my family home larger now, or excuse me, our, our lot. Now I can be flexible with where I kind of move that lot line when we change it to the R-one twelve. So we're not looking to do anything different from what the neighbors right to the south of us have done. I'm not planning on putting a bunch of houses in there to change the look and fill the space, so we'll be living up there on the upper piece, and so we're really excited to move to the area, but that's kind of how this came about.
Do you mind stating your name for the record?
Yeah, Ben Care. Yeah, thanks, if I didn't say that.
Does anybody have any question? Nope, okay.
I have a question.
All right, well, this is, this, this is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public, and if you have a comment, just come to the podium and make sure to state your name for the record.
So my name's Adam Ellison, I live just across the road from this lot. So I don't really have a comment, I more just have a question. I haven't met you yet, Ben, but I wanted to talk to you after the meeting.
You too.
Yeah, you too. I guess my question, it's kind of to you, but if you're just intending to build your house there, what's the, what's the purpose in changing it to, like what's the thinking on changing it to R-one twelve? Just out of curiosity, because that allows you to make a smaller lot size, right? So I'm immediate like, oh, maybe one day he'll want to divide that out and sell the lot. Is that kind of the thinking, that if you decide to do that one day, you can do that?
Totally.
Okay.
Can I just answer that?
Yeah, I was going to say, we'll have you come back up in a second. Oh, okay, sorry, I don't know the protocol here, so. But yeah, that's my main question, and then I also wanted to ask you later about the road that runs, the dirt road that runs up to the bench up there, because a lot of neighbors use that to get up to the trails. But we can table that for another time, I don't think it has to do with the zoning right now.
Sorry, did you have any questions for the commission tonight?
Um, no, it was mostly for him.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Yep. Is there anyone else from the public that'd like to make a comment? I'd ask Ben to come back up and maybe answer that question.
Would you just, would you just spend the access to the property?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm going to come back up to the mic.
And again, we're not talking about development tonight, we're just talking about the rezone tonight, so.
Do you want me to take them out to dinner tonight?
It's up to you.
That's, that's up to you, yeah.
It's up to you and it's your property, so.
Tell you what, what I'll do is, in respect to the neighbors, let me, uh, let me chat with them. I think more than anything, I haven't moved up there yet, and I think there's a lot of, there's some acreage up here, over three acres, this hasn't been touched for years. And nobody's gone through the, this to be able to do it, it's a lot of work. These guys are fantastic to work with, but it's a lot of monotony. We've done it, and there is valid concerns from the neighbors, totally get it. Nobody's been there, people acts, because of that, people access the property however they want. But in respect to your guys' night, what I'll do is I'll table this and I'll go chat with the neighbors and get them a hundred percent in the understanding of what we're doing, so they can be confident and comfortable. And we want to be confident and comfortable as we move forward, being their neighbors that they're happy about as well.
Are you suggesting then that we don't make a motion on this tonight and that we table this rezone for another meeting?
Uh, no.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say that.
Yeah.
All right, I'm just clarifying, that's kind of what I...
We want to move forward, but...
And Ben, I'm not opposing the zoning change at all. I just think you're...
Yeah, totally.
Okay.
I think I need to take them out to dinner tonight and have some communication, and I think that will be, I think that will be beneficial.
That'll be awesome, thanks, Ben.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
All right. Anyone else from the public? All right, I will close the public hearing portion and I'll bring it back up to the commissioners for discussion or a motion.
Hey, Jacob. Is the lines on the staff reports accurate on the satellite portion?
Uh, yeah, so this is what I was going to bring up, I apologize. So the subject property, this is what we heard before, it's only this red portion that is being rezoned.
Okay, do you, do you see the other property just, is that north? Yeah, and then go up to the next house.
I'm just going to delete that, we don't need that. So scroll down a little bit, you said?
Scroll up.
Oh, scroll the other direction.
Right here.
This one.
It looks like they're... Does, does that his property or is that...
Yeah, so this is all his property right here, so let me grab this, move it out of the way.
It looks like they're landscaping is on his property.
Yeah, so you can kind of see, here's where the property line actually is, or at least where it, it's approximated per the Utah County parcel map.
Okay.
So sometimes there are a couple deviations, a little bit here and there, depending on, you know, what the, what the deed actually is or stuff like that. And if there is, you know, someone whose landscaping goes over the property line, that just becomes a civil matter at that point.
This just looks a lot further away than the one in, in our paper. And the one on the paper looks like they're like right on, yeah, right into the home. That's what we're asking.
Right, yeah, but yeah, no, it's, it's a, just right there. And I think this is probably the path that they're talking about to get up to the trail, I would assume.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, we didn't, we're done with that.
Chair, I just thought that when he came before, he was asking for bigger lot size, and now he's wanting small, I feel that's weird.
He wasn't, it didn't get approved with City Council, but when he, according to the paper, when he acquired this new parcel, then that kind of changed everything, that kind of opened up some other options, so.
And it didn't include, the last time he came here, it didn't include, because now he's bought another lot, so.
And Madam Chairman, last time, his request is more to have like horses and such, and then that was ultimately denied, because there is a difference in uses between the R-one zone and the rural residential zone, whereas this time, it's just from R-one to R-one, so the uses aren't going to be changing, this just allows more flexibility in his development for this time around.
Thanks, Jacob.
So can I make a motion then, we're ready? Let's see. I move the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the request of Ben Care for the rezone of approximately two point one-nine acres of land located at approximately six forty-four North Homestead Circle from the R-one twenty zone to the R-one twelve zone, and adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report. Um, yeah, that's it.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Shirley and a second by Commissioner Patton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number four is a public hearing to consider the request of Russell Jacobson for a zone change on approximately one point one-five acres of land from the R-one twenty single-family residential zone to the R-one ten zone located at approximately five fifty-five east, eleven hundred north. Jacob?
Thank you. All right, so the third rezone that we have for tonight is for Russell Jacobson, who is requesting to rezone his property from the R-one twenty zone to the R-one ten zone. So the applicant's property is approximately one point fifteen acres in size and is located at five fifty-five east, eleven hundred north. And the applicant is requesting a rezone prior to applying for a subdivision plat that would allow him to sell some land to a couple of his neighbors. So before we get into too much else, I did want to take a look at the zoning map and just kind of explain what the different zones are that are around here, because it's kind of a hodgepodge of different zones in this particular location. So this bright yellow portion down here, or this light yellow, I guess, is the R-one eight zone, which allows for eight thousand square feet per lot. This one is the R-one nine zone, which is nine thousand square feet per lot. This bright yellow right here, that one is ten thousand square feet per lot, the R-one ten zone. And then we have the R-one fifteen zone in a couple of places, and then we have the R-one twenty zone, which is what this property is zoned as right now. Now, this proposed rezone is extremely similar to the previous item that was heard, as it too is going from single-family zoning, zoning to single-family zoning. So the uses are going to stay the same, and it's located in the single-family low density designation in the general plan as well. So as it was with the last item, this designation includes the R-one fifteen, R-one twelve, and R-one ten zones. So the proposed request would be more in line with the vision of the general plan than its current zoning under the R-one twenty zone. Now, with that being said, there has been some concern from neighboring property owners who feel that this proposed rezone might increase the density of the area to a point where it may not be supported by existing infrastructure, and you should all have a copy of that email that was sent in, in regards to their concern. But just taking a minute to explain a bit more about what the differences are between the R-one twenty and the R-one ten zone, like I said earlier, there will be no change in the permitted uses for any of the properties. Now, the only real difference is that the R-one twenty zone allows for twenty thousand square feet per lot, a hundred ten feet width, and the R-one ten zone is ten thousand square feet per lot and ninety feet in width, which of course is smaller for sure and would allow more flexibility in the proposed development, but not to the point where it would become too cumbersome, especially given the width of the property as it is right now. And even if the applicant were to apply for something like, say, a flag lot subdivision, only one flag lot would be permitted if all of the flag requirement, if all of the flag lot requirements are met. So there would still be some restrictions that would apply on top of that, so. But ultimately, the applicant was just looking to sell some of the property to some of his neighbors for right now, and then potentially retain a little bit of land for future development at some point. But in any case, staff recommends approval, and I can take any questions. Yeah?
About not rezoning?
About not rezoning, sure.
I'm sorry. What, what is this little corner?
That one is owned by the same person right here.
Okay.
Lance Newman. So Lance Newman kind of owns a whole little section right here.
Is this section off?
Yeah, it, it's an odd section, that's for sure, but I think it's actually well laid out, because this portion right here is about fifty-six feet in width, which is approximately the location that we need for a right-of-way. So whether a right-of-way actually ends up going in there at some point or not, I don't know. But of course, that is his development, and we'll see what happens in that area whenever that happens. No worries, it's a good question.
Does anyone have any other questions for Jacob? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here tonight? If you'd just come up to the podium and just state your name for the record.
Great job, Jacob, thanks. I'm Russell Jacobson, I'm the one applying for the rezone. Jacob pretty much said it all, few of the neighbors want to buy some property, and I'd more than like to oblige that so they can cause their yards to be a little bit bigger, I guess, so it's not really congesting anything, it's just rezoning to the same zone that they have already.
Does anyone have any questions for Russell?
Are you tearing down your house?
No.
I was actually going to ask the same thing, I drive by it every day.
I drive by it every day, too.
Just doing some dirt work.
Okay.
Lot of trees, too.
I saw it's a big tree in the front yard right now. We're almost right there.
Yes, yep, yeah, I'm, I'm sharpening the chainsaw tonight to...
Yes, yep, yeah, I'm, I'm sharpening the chainsaw tonight to cut that. We wore it out.
All right, thank you Russell.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public. If you have any comments, you can just come up to the podium and make sure to state your name for the record. Seeing none, I will close it to the public and I'll bring it up to the commissioners for discussion or emotion.
Jacob, do we need to read the letter from the resident?
No.
As long as you have the-
Yeah.
I don't have any concerns with it being right next to R110.
And it follows our general plan.
And it follows the general plan.
Sorry, we're just talking about a rezone today.
Yeah.
So I will make a move, the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the request of J- Russell Jacobson for the rezone of approximately 1.15 acres of land located at 555 East 1100 North. From the R120 zone to the R110 zone and adopting the exhibits, conditions and findings of the staff report.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Patton and a second by Commissioner Phillips. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Whew, we're just skipping right along, so we get to skip number five. All right, so the sixth item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing to consider the request of Jacob Busby. To amend section 10 dash 12A dash 2 dash C, permitted conditional and accessory uses in the business and manufacturing park, BMP zone. To add use number 2185, bottling and canning soft drinks and carbonated waters, non-alcoholic, including drink powders and concentrates to the list of permitted, permitted uses within the BMP zone. Jacob.
Thank you. And Dustin, just, uh, in regards to the last question that you had about the letter, you know, just as long as everyone feels like their thoughts and concerns are being heard, that's the most important thing. We don't necessarily have to read them out loud, but as long as, yeah, you've had the chance to read it and all.
For sure.
Okay, so the next item that we have is a coded text amendment for Jacob Busby to permit use 2185 in the business manufacturing park zone. Now, use 2185 is categorized as the bottling and canning of soft drinks and carbonated waters, including drink powders and concentrates, but not including alcoholic beverages. I had the applicant explain a little bit more about this, about what this use is all about, um, earlier there in the week. And they said that the process for the proposed use begins with a few deliveries for supplies such as base materials to create the carbonated drinks, such as, you know, sugar, flavoring and such. Um, and then food grade supplies such as aluminum cans or plastic or glass bottles. Um, and in the applicant's case, they would expect about two, two truckloads a day for aluminum cans. Um, now after these deliveries are made, then the liquid is made onsite in blending and holding tanks. And then the aluminum cans are filled. Uh, and to make the liquid, additional water is required from the city's utilities depending on the amount of carbonated drinks being made. Uh, which all of that would be reviewed by the engineering department when they review the building permit for the tenant finish out. Uh, then, once the drinks have been made, the drinks are stored on a pallet and are delivered to a storage unit elsewhere for distribution to other businesses. No individual sales are made onsite. Uh, the applicant anticipates approximately four truckloads per day for the delivery of the completed products. Uh, the entire production is located within, entirely within an enclosed building and no outside storage is used. And so that's what the overall process looks like, it's definitely manufacturing in nature. And so let's take a look at what the business manufacturing park is all about. Uh, so the business manufacturing zone is, and, uh, business manufacturing park zone is intended to serve as a buffer between the Grove Zone and the manufacturing zone. Um, as you can kinda see down here, we've got the Grove Zone all in this area, and then we've got the manufacturing zone right over here. So the BMP zone is just like the in-between section. So it's intended to be that kinda buffer where it allows for manufacturing uses, uh, but only in a park-like kind of atmosphere. Um, that has more similar design requirements to like that of the Grove Zone. So, it kinda blends all these different uses together. And so, going over the purpose of the BMP zone, it's established to provide for a mixture of research, office and certain specialized light manufacturing uses. And light manufacturing uses shall include fabricating, processing, testing, assembling, packaging and storage associated with the manufacturing of products. Which have a high value in relation to bulk from previously prepared materials, uh, but not in, not including uses involving primary production of wood, metal, concrete, asphalt, petroleum or chemical products from raw materials. Um, so it's not intended to be anything for like actual heavy manufacturing or anything like that. Uh, all of that stuff we'll find in the manufacturing distribution zone, so, um. In this particular case though, light manufacturing, it gives us a few examples here. Um, but I found a really good definition from the international zoning code when it comes to, uh, the definition for light manufacturing. And the international zoning code defines light manufacturing as, the manufacturing, compounding, processing, assembling, packaging or testing of goods or equipment. Including research activities conducted entirely within an enclosed structure with no outside storage. Served by a modest volume of trucks or vans and imposing a negligible impact on the surrounding environment by noise, vibration, smoke, dust or pollutants. So a few key points from that, it's all enclosed, it doesn't have very many deliveries or anything like that, it just does not really affect the surrounding area in any negative way. And so whenever we look at the production of this particular use, um, I believe that it meets a lot of those requirements. They've only got, you know, a couple of truckloads in the day, a couple of truckloads at night. Um, and then, that's not really any more than what they're already doing. It's all within an enclosed building and they've even got their storage in a different location as well, so. Um, with all that being said, um, and understanding the purposes of the BMP zone and understanding what is entailed with the proposed use. Staff recommends approval of the proposed, uh, code text amendment and I can take any questions.
So this will encompass all, in the whole city, all the BMPs?
Yes, yep, not just-
Where are all of those?
Yeah, not just the applicant's location, but every, uh, everywhere in the BMP zone.
Is there anywhere else besides that?
That's it.
Oh.
Yeah, that's the only place.
That's the only BMP. You know, you mentioned water?
Yes.
Which I would just be under utilities, right? I'm just curious if it's more than that or?
Yeah, and that would all- Um, I mean, if there is like an increase in utilities, usually that's more like a per business sort of thing, not necessarily a per use. In this particular case, water would be more of like one of those use things, um, because they need a lot of water to make the soda and that's what the use is for. Um, but all of that is taken care of with the business license and with the building permits so that way they can all finish their stuff out. And so, our engineering-
Nothing we have to be-
Nothing that we have to be concerned about necessarily for, uh, tonight at the very least, that's all something that engineering would look at.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jacob?
Not for Jacob, no.
Thank you Jacob.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here tonight? Do you wanna come up to the podium and state your name for the record and let us bombard you with questions?
Yeah, of course.
Awesome.
I'm Jacob Busby. I work at Keystone Copac Manufacturing, it's a family-owned company, I'm the son of the owners. Um, it's my father Kevin Busby back there and my mom. I work as, as a process engineer for Keystone Copac and help design the line that we are proposing to bring to our manufacturing. Uh, we've loved it here in Pleasant Grove, been here since January and it's been awesome. I know that, uh, so I guess this, uh, business, this new business will bring us, um, will bring us more work and more employees to hire and I think it'll be great for the city. Uh, also, right next to us at Asia, I believe they are also zoned for that, correct me if I'm wrong?
Asia, the water manufacturing, they make water.
Yeah, they, they make waters and other beverages like that.
I don't know if you can make water, sorry.
They package it.
They package it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, yeah, we specialize in nutritional products and make a lot of proteins and that kinda stuff and we wanna change our powdered drinks into a, a ready-to-drink beverage, so.
Awesome. Does anybody have any questions for Jacob?
I just have one question, um, just going along with, with this definition, definition of BMP area. Cause I know, you're running a business out of there now, so you have plenty of room within the building for storage and the trucks bringing things. You're not running into a problem where you're gonna have to store things outside in the parking lot?
Yes, yeah, we have reserved 45,000 square feet of the building that will hold this section of our business.
Okay.
That's empty right now. And, but because of the nature of bottles, it's a lot more product than powders, um, per serving, you know, per serving you get like one bottle and then in a bag you'd hold like 30 servings. And so because of that, we'll be shipping, as soon as we produce our product, we'll need to ship it to a, a 3PL to store the product. And that's the three trucks that Jacob mentioned.
They're also not allowed to do outside storage in this zone, right?
Correct.
Jacob?
Um, that is a fantastic question. So, we actually do permit some outside storage in this zone, but it has certain conditions. Um, and I'm happy to go over some of those conditions if you'd like, but, uh, the, at the very least, the proposed use or at least for the applicant, they're not proposing to use any outdoor storage. Uh, the use itself, um, if we want to, we can put a condition on there that says no outdoor storage, but, um, overall, I think a lot of that is already covered pretty well underneath the existing ordinances.
Thank you Jacob.
And if I can, as a, as a food manufacturer, we can't store anything outside just for the safety of our products.
As long as there's no food, I know you can, yeah. Uh, the only reason I asked that, well, it doesn't even matter, cause I actually haven't looked at that parking lot in person, so it's irrelevant right now, I guess. So I'm good, I'm good with it, I'm done.
Thank you Jacob.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing as well, so I will open it up to the public. Not seeing any, yeah, not seeing any public, I will close it and bring it back up to the commissioners for discussion or emotion.
It kinda seems to fit fine with what's going on. Sorry Jacob, I really like that definition, but I guess that was in the comments, that's not really our definition of-
Correct, that's not our definition, that's just a good recommendation from the international zoning code.
Okay.
And I feel like it matches a lot of what we're trying to do anyways, and that's really the main reason why I brought it up, is just to kind of help paint the picture.
So as far as storage outside, that, for anyone that's in that area, it just has to meet what you guys already have in place for anything stored outside, which wanna be food product, but it sounds like you have a good handle on that.
And those are the requirements, just if you're curious.
If there's no other questions?
No.
I'm gonna make a motion, I move the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the request of Jacob Busby to amend city code section 10 dash 12A dash 2 dash C. Permitted conditional accessory uses by adding use number 2185 to the list of permitted uses in the business and manufacturing park zone and adopting the exhibits, conditions and findings of the staff report with no modifications.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Phillips and a second by Commissioner Trickler. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, one more item, number seven on the agenda, public hearing to consider the request of Pleasant Grove City to amend section 10 dash 15 dash 48, mobile food trucks. This proposed text amendment would permit mobile food businesses to operate within public parks. As long as a food truck public park permit is approved and certain conditions are met, such as location requirements, trash removal, permitted hours and advertising. Jacob?
All righty. So for the last item that we have for tonight, we have one more code text amendment sponsored by staff. Um, so a bit of background, we've had some, uh, food truck vendors have expressed their interest in vending food from food trucks within a public park. A lot of them have been asking about the Cook Park recently because we've had a lot of traffic over in that particular area. And while mobile food businesses are already permitted to operate in public parks, it currently requires the authorization from the Parks and Rec Department Director. Uh, and so to alleviate the requirements for operation for each mobile food business that wants to operate within a park. Staff proposes that certain conditions be implemented so food trucks can operate in parks without needing approval from the Parks and Rec Director. So, pulling up the code itself, we'll look at some of these proposed conditions. Now, these conditions for a mobile food business to operate within a public park can be categorized into four general categories. Uh, we've got a permit being required and what would be permitted, the parking location for the food truck, removal of trash and responsibility for damages, and then signage. Those are the four different categories that we've got. So, for the first section, the permit being required, this includes, uh, number one, number seven, number nine and number 10. And we'll kinda go through those here in just a second, but, so this general category, uh, for them needing to have a permit. It just ensures that the city can keep track of which mobile food businesses are currently under operation within a public park. How many permits are currently issued for each park, how often these businesses are operating within public parks and so on. And in so doing, staff can make sure that then, uh, that the vending does not negatively impact the safety or traffic of those nearby. And, uh, then we can also contact each vendor if something needs to be addressed. Um, so, like I said, this one includes, uh, number one, a permit is only valid for one calendar date and is valid only for the date in which it is issued. Number seven, food truck permits shall be limited to a specific, to specific public parks, designated parking stalls within those parks. And specific days of the week as determined by the city administrator or designee. And the permit application shall list the approved parks, the number and location of available parking stalls and the days on which food truck operations are permitted. Then we've got number nine, food truck, uh, public park permits shall not be transferable and shall be revoked should the food vending operation be changed from the approved applicant. Or if the person operating the food truck is not listed on the approved application. And it is illegal to operate a food truck in a public park without a permit. So those items are all underneath that general category. The next category is in regards to party, uh, parking, so similar to the above section, it's important for each mobile food business to indicate where they will park their vehicle so staff can ensure that safety is attained. Landscaping remains intact and unaffected and traffic is not blocked. Uh, so this one will include number two, food trucks shall not park in the designated parking stall listed on the permit and must not impede normal traffic flow. Food trucks are not allowed to block other food trucks. Uh, number three, food trucks shall not park on the grass or other pathways. And number eight, food trucks shall not be parked within a public park at any time other than regular park hours. Uh, trash removal, uh, many food vendors provide food inside a disposable container. Um, because it's important to keep the city's parks clean and free of trash, the city can provide some trash cans for the community, but it will still be the responsibility of the food truck operators. To ensure that all trash is removed from the immediate area from where they're operating. Uh, so we've got number four, um, food truck operators are responsible for cleanup and trash removal generated from their operation in the media, in the immediate area. And then we've got number five as well, food truck operators will be assessed for all damages or extra trash cleanup within the park generated by, with, uh, their operation. And then the last one that we have is for signage, uh, to allow fair advertisement without disrupting the general welfare of the community, signs are permitted, but only on the food truck itself. They can't have like little pop-up signs, they can't- They can't have like little pop-up signs, they can't add any other like wall signs or permanent signs of any kind, so. This one goes down to number six, food trucks may display their business name and logo on their vehicle, no other advertising is allowed in the parking lot or park. Now, these conditions are intended to meet the purposes of Section 10-1548, which is to provide clear and concise regulations for the use and operation of mobile food trucks to prevent hazards to safety, traffic, or health, as well as to preserve the peace, safety, and welfare of the community. And so staff recommends approval of the proposed code text amendment and the conditions outlined in the amendment that they better define, that they define the necessary requirements that would permit a mobile food business to operate within a public park without having to receive the approval from the Parks and Rec Director. And that the same conditions ensure that mobile food businesses can easily obtain a business license without negatively impacting the health, safety, traffic, or general welfare of the community as they operate in a public park. And so with that, I can take any questions, we can discuss any of these conditions. And yeah.
I think it all sounds good, I just want to make sure, I know because it used to be with Park and Recs, all these requirements are new that you guys came up with, right?
I believe so.
Because now it'll be under the city.
I believe so. I believe Daniel worked with Dion and they worked together to come up with these.
So, I don't know if this is a dumb question or not, but on item one, a permit is only valid for one calendar day and is valid only for the date for which it is issued? So each time they're going to be at a park, they need to do, they need to get a permit for that day? So even if it's a regular thing on Wednesdays, food trucks are here, they've got to get a permit? And then my question is, what if something, because Cook is a new park, what if something becomes very popular, it's tradition, like every, like maybe like a farmer's market, but it's food truck? And other food trucks want to get in on that, how are you going to do the permit process? Like, can they do it a year in advance, can, to get a permit, to first come, first serve? Are you going to get a number?
Yeah, I don't see any issue with that.
Okay.
I don't know if there's a limit to the number of vending, of food truck applications that we would have per park. I would assume that we would, you know, just that we, people can still come and park and enjoy the festivities and all of that, and that we're not blocking too much traffic. But I...
I guess you can put conditions on it, because I was just thinking, if it gets really popular somewhere at a park, and then more food trucks want to get in, and then they start saying the city's favoring other food trucks over others.
I just had a thought, too.
But I guess you can put, can, if that does come up, you could put conditions on it or set up a system.
I think if it's coming down to like someone is, you know, getting the early bird, and they're like, okay, I'm going to be the first one, I'm going to book this day, this day, this day, this day, all through the year.
They can go ahead and do that.
They can do that, yeah. But if it, yeah, I don't know, I don't know, that's, that's a, that's a good thing.
Because I was just wondering, there's no problems now, but I wondered if in the future?
Right.
Since now this is allowed, and I didn't want, yeah, people saying, hey, this is a horrible system, or you're playing favorites with food trucks, so.
Right, but at the same time, it's also really hard for us to say, oh, no, well, we understand that you've been here, but sorry, we're not going to give you the permit either. Because if they meet these requirements, yeah.
And kind of first come, first serve.
That's what I would assume, is first come, first serve. And then it's just dependent on, you know, who actually puts in the effort to get the application, or how many that we have, or something like that. So I bet you the days that we would have activities or something like that, those ones would be in high demand. But I don't know, that's something that we'll definitely have to see how it flows, for sure.
Just wondering, because I guess it can always be amended down the road if necessary, or if we got to write up some rules or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
We, is that part of the conditions that we're talking about, if we want to put something in there?
If you want to put something in there, absolutely, we can go ahead and make some suggestions and we can discuss it a little bit further.
I don't know if anyone else is familiar with Harvey Park, but they have a roundabout at their park, and they do roundabouts Wednesdays. And it doesn't take any of the parking away from the park users, because they have that roundabout. With Cook, they don't have a place in my mind that would be allocated just for the trucks, they would have, it would be nice if, if we could put that, well, this is where the trucks need to be, be each year or each time, and know, so they know.
So I think...
I think that's in there, though, right?
Give me one second. So I think for that, what will end up happening is, I bet, the more experience that we get, the more we'll kind of like update our maps and say, okay, so here's where most people want to park, if you want to vent here, you can take up like, say, these two spaces, and that's about it. Because we got to make sure that traffic can flow through here, that we're not impeding anyone, it has to meet this requirement, this highlighted one, so.
Line of sight would be a major concern, you've got kids running around, bikes, whatever.
Exactly, things like that. And I think a lot of that stuff can be determined by, where was it, the administrative appro, or administrator, city administrator or designee.
I'm just wondering if it gets as popular as Harvey Park, where they have like eight food trucks, and it's a tradition to go do that, and it would be better to do it on the west side.
And I don't think necessarily we would say no roundabouts, or something like that. I bet you would still...
Well, no, we just don't have a roundabout there, that's, I'm saying, that you have to figure out something where you, because we want more businesses to come in, so try to find that spot.
Right, it's just we want, we got to just make sure that it's, you know, appropriate, I guess, for lack of a better...
Also, I just, I feel like there's too little parking there already.
At Cook Park?
At Cook Park already. And they're taking up three, four spaces each.
Mm-hmm.
Unless you did it like the Provo, or not Provo, Orem.
And so that's maybe where we would put limits on how many...
I think there should be limits on how many can be at a park at a time.
Mm-hmm.
For sure.
I can, I kind of like, even though I started this, I like how broad it is right now because we haven't really dealt with it, experienced it, we haven't had a problem with it yet.
Right.
As long as, so I guess I like, I'd hate to put restrictions on things when we don't even know how it's working yet.
Because like, if there's a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I've been, I've been trying to be patient.
Go ahead. You've got to just...
I'm just looking at, if you scroll up just a little bit for me, please. All of this is, is new, but really it's to alleviate having to get permission, all of this was available.
It's like all this is required from the public, from the Parks and Rec Department, or Director.
But all you're trying to do is alleviate the food trucks from one more person that they have to get permission from.
Yeah.
That's all this is really saying.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
They had to do all of the steps anyway.
They had to do all of these things before, but Leon had to probably verbally tell them and have them sign with blood that they were going to do this.
Probably, yeah.
And so now we're just formalizing it, and we're, we're taking kind of a middleman out of it so that it just is an easier process.
Right.
Okay.
Great point, so we really just care if this is fitting the purpose in the first place, less, makes it easier for the food trucks and...
The city.
And the city, okay.
Yeah, so.
And Leon, is he the Parks and Rec guy? Dion, oh, not Leon, it's Dion, okay.
And I think we'll figure that stuff out in the future, so I will make a motion to move the Planning Commission forward.
Oh, no, I guess not.
No, I guess not, we forgot. Thanks, Kristina. I didn't forget, I was just...
I forgot.
Because we were talking to the applicant. Does anybody have any more questions for Jacob?
No.
No.
No, thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
And because it's a public hearing, I will open it up to the public. And seeing no public, I will close it to the public, and I will bring it back to the commissioners for a discussion or a motion.
All right, well, unless we want any discussion, but I will move, or I'll make the motion to move the Planning Commission forward, a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the request of Pleasant Grove City to amend City Code Section 10-15-48 Food Trucks to permit mobile food businesses to operate in a public park with conditions and adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report.
I second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Patton and a second by Commissioner Shirley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I would take a motion to approve the minutes from July 23, 2025.
I motion to approve the minutes from the July 23, 2025 meeting.
Oh, I'll second it. I have a motion by Commissioner Trickler and a second by Commissioner Patton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I take a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Eight o'clock on the dot.
Eight o'clock on the dot.
All he said, seven forty-five.
Seven fifty to eight o'clock, yeah.